So I could go ask the clerk what they do in that situation, but she won't know.
Okay.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying that's so.
So we probably wouldn't have.
Right.
Okay, we'll call a regular board meeting, please, and you would please stand and we'll have a buzzer allegiance in a moment's time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjin the item or our agenda. Two things, I'd like to add under routine matters to pay Weers amount of thirty-three thousand one hundred and eighty, that's kind of our monthly payment that we've been making to them. We need to make sure we got that appropriated for them to pay that, which would send our total payroll payroll claims an amount to one million eight hundred and nine one three two point two two. One eight zero nine one three two point two two. And also then, under fundraiser, we'd like to, or actually fundraiser, under the routine matters, add, eh, which is, we just found out about our wrestlers, that they're gonna need to stay overnight. So allowing our wrestling coach and wrestlers to achieve that so they can compete on the, their great achievement.
Where are they staying overnight?
Motion, wait it for a second. Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to amend the agenda. Any discussion on that?
Debbie, did you have a question?
Just where Andrea said Chicago.
East Chicago.
I think she's a mom.
He's not going.
And of course, all this is recorded. It will be on YouTube.
I, no, but, um, you added Weers into the claims of payroll.
Yeah.
That claim of payroll was January, right?
Right, this would be for, to get that authority to pay.
February.
Yeah. Yeah, the dollar amount one change, you're right, yep, sorry, that's right. Getting ahead of game, but there'll be a head and we'll be behind right now.
What is the dollar now, because I don't have.
Minutes for discussion on the minute. The agenda. Hearing none, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Approval of minutes, we have the January sixth twenty twenty regular meeting, and we have the January twentieth twenty twenty regular meeting. Minutes.
Thanks.
Mr. President, I'm going to accept this proposal.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Reports, the administrator reports this evening, Mrs. Clayton, your name shows up first.
In the world of special education, on January thirtieth and thirty-first, part of the twenty twenty special education grant, there was money allotted for professional development, and eleven of us attended the Focus on Inclusion Conference in Indianapolis. Representation, there were two administrators, Mr. Reddick and myself, two special education teachers, and then seven general education teachers. Some of the areas that were discovered, I guess, at that time was co-teaching and what it means, specifically design instruction, what does an inclusive classroom look like, fostering trauma-invested learning environments, creating twenty-first century engaging classrooms, and sensory strategies. You know, we went, we attended, but then the biggest thing is going to be able to come back and share what it is that we learned, what was that takeaway, what is the one thing that you want to try to implement in your classroom. And so we are meeting on February twenty-sixth as a group again to kind of share our takeaways, what are some things that they want to try, maybe then what are they feel would be a hurdle in trying to implement something that is for the betterment of all students, not just special education students. So keep it posted in March as to how that goes and where we're moving forward in that direction. Right now, currently evaluating the program, we're about a year out from being part of a co-op. With that has come some great things, but also some things that maybe didn't foresee. We do have a growing population of special education students, we are currently up to one hundred and eighty-two that we are servicing. We have six at Twin Lakes, one at TC Harris. Right now, we have twenty autistic children, two that are identified as blind and low vision, five developmentally delayed, three deaf and hard of hearing, four with emotional disabilities, twenty-four with intellectual disabilities, sixteen language impairments, twenty-seven OHI, that's other health impairments, two orthopedic impairments, seventeen speech impairments, sixty-one with specific learning disabilities, and one with a traumatic brain injury. So just today, I sent out to special education teachers to have them go through their caseload and identify exactly what minutes we need to be servicing these students and what do those services look like, so that we can go through our current staff and see where our needs need to be, you know, increased. What kind of programming, are we not maybe meeting the needs right now so that we can make sure that we're meeting all of those needs? Coming, but that's just kind of what we're doing right now. Title World, Title Four, I think we've amended about ten times, but we were brought to the attention that we were under agreement with Wabash Valley Education Center for five thousand dollars of our grant needs to go to them to, for lack of better words, we get professional development, we get two seats free for professional development that they host, plus we can send ten teachers in the summer, they usually do kind of a two-day workshop and we can send ten, but that's the five thousand dollars that comes out of the grant that we're not aware of until we receive the invoice. So had to go back then and amend both the eighteen and the nineteen grant, there's five thousand dollars that goes to them. Any questions?
Have we been utilizing that?
No.
Are we giving to you?
I sure hope so.
Any other questions? You sent us a breakdown sometime, what you read off to us there on the everything.
And I did meet with preschool last week, going through and seeing how that program will look next year. We're wanting to offer all day, five days a week, and then continue with half day, would just be in the morning, depending on the children's needs and parents' wants, how many days a week they would attend in the morning. But one of the reasons for the all-day program is we have some students who are five but aren't quite ready to go on to a full-day kindergarten environment where there's, you know, twenty-eight students. And so being able to keep them in a smaller setting, but also meet their needs, and we can do that with that transition of them being there all day long, and right now, we currently do not offer that for our preschoolers.
With the amount of kids that we've got here, one hundred and eighty-two various things, we've approved some paralegals here lately. Do you perceive more that we're gonna need to put in because of, I think last board meeting you talked about maybe having fifteen just come into the door? You know, where do we need to be looking at, because as we plan for the financing and things, right, we need to make sure.
And that is the reason I sent out the Excel sheet to the teachers today, so that we can see exactly, you know, what are we obligated by law, that we need to make sure that we are still offering, but then are we utilizing the staff that we currently have to the best of the ability? And then where are those goals and where do we need to fill them? Because you're right, I don't want to hire people if we have people sitting around or we're chasing our tails.
And from my knowledge, that money for those come out of the special edge fund that we generate either through a grant versus local, or how does that go?
Yeah, so the way the grant, so there should be the state's money.
Right.
And then there's the grant money.
Right.
Right now, the grant does not cover paraprofessionals. But that is something, you know, each year I write that grant, and you have twenty-seven months to spend it, but, so I will write a brand-new grant this year, so based on our needs, that is where something we're working with superintendent, where's our money, what is that money that the state is giving us, what is that covering? And then where does the grant need to play out?
Okay, so we can't actually write it into the grant for those.
The grant only goes so far, and right now, it's spoken for with other staff.
Right, but what I'm saying is that as far as, it can't mail that, right, it's not like strictly to the state, but.
Have we got any part of our Medicare?
We have training, yes, they now have everything that they need, and training is set up for February nineteenth, and as soon as that is done, then we can start going.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mrs. Circle.
Good evening. It has been a whirlwind since the start of the semester. Sports, the winter sports are starting to guide down a little bit, but they're getting excited because we're in our sectionals. And as we were discussing briefly, because we had Cooper Kinsler named to semi-state, so we had three wrestlers that were in our regional, and so we're going through. Girls' sectionals, we had last week, unfortunately, they lost, but you guys fought very hard. Boys are coming that way. Dance team, Palms, they've been doing really well, and you guys are gonna be going to regional, which weekend?
It is in February, the end of this month, twenty-sixth.
And then choir and band have their solo ensembles as well, which I have all the different things that are in here for you to look and see. But the noteworthy thing was Entertainers actually got a perfect score, which is like a rarity. So they got an absolute perfect score. And ironically, Elijah would contest to this. Elijah was playing basketball, so he was not there, so several of the girls had to take actually same mailed parts. So Miss Tom was a little worried going into this, so they made it, they did make it. I have a lot of information in here, but most importantly, I really want to introduce Elijah Hudson and Joe Perry and Amy Tonsoni, who are going to talk about Pernasis. Oh, they're gonna do it all, huh? Okay.
So hello, I'm Elijah Hudson.
I'm Joe Perry.
And we are both seniors here at Delphi, and we're also three-year members of Pernasis.
So we go with Pernasis, our student newspaper, is to entertain and inform our student body. So there's three mediums that we do this through. So first of all, is bi-weekly articles, we'll get to that a little bit later. We also do a bi-weekly Oracle overview, which basically is a quick news bit for people to go through and kind of understand what's going on currently at our high school. And then we also have a monthly paper edition, which we publish on computer, send to the print shop who gives us back copies, press distribute throughout the school. So the categories for our articles that are online, first of all, we have news, obviously, we're a newspaper, so we post, you know, what's going on in our community and our school. Recently, Nick Roberson wrote an article about Jim Baird going to, presenting at Rotary, which also had some of our students there, so that's kind of cool, we get to meet the congressman. We also have opinions, this kind of allows our students to freely express themselves. Like last year, I believe, we created a little controversy, Jordan Ladd wrote something about e-learning and that. And then we also have sports, this covers predominantly local, you know, Delphi sports. Sometimes it also extends to this collegiate or professional level. Like recently, I wrote an article about our homecoming win for basketball.
And we have what we call features, which are stories about our fellow students, and this is our most popular category underneath the articles. And recently, I wrote one about Alex Mulberg, who is a sophomore at Delphi, and he has cancer. So we just wanted to spread his story, and hopefully, we can see that in the Carroll comment this Wednesday as well. And as Joe mentioned earlier, we do Oracle overviews, also known as OO's. And these are quick reads, and they get a lot of information on and not a lot of space, so.
We also have Webshow Wednesday, which is also a bi-weekly video that we do. This is headed by Michael O'Neill, basically head of camera crew. So it does updates on like what's going on, so it goes over like local events, what's happening, and it's primarily to also entertain the viewers. It comes out on Wednesdays, every Wednesday, and it like has like little news in it, little art features or just like fun little skits.
And Pernasis is important to our student body because we inform and entertain them, and it is important to us and our fellow classmates in Pernasis, because we get real-world journalism experience by doing things in and outside of school, such as parent community events and interviewing our fellow students. And we work with newspapers locally, such as the Ferris Tribune, Monticello Herald, Journal of Career, and even the Good as Well. And we are published in them as well.
Example of that, like past few years, Elijah and I have been able to go to the middle school triathlon, report on that, we got published in the comment every single year, that's always cool. And most importantly, though, this paper allows us to like develop skills. So like obviously helps learn to meet deadlines, we have to give our writings to Mrs. T in time for like edit, so we can publish on time. Most importantly, though, it helps us to develop our communication, interview planning, writing, technological skills, so we can, you know, do the paper, so we can carry out tasks. And recently, it's also given us a chance to improve our speaking skills, because we've been, obviously, we're speaking here tonight to you guys, we've spoken to Rotary, we've spoken to Tri-Cappa, just a bunch of organizations, and it helps us to express ourselves and improve our speaking skills.
Yeah, all in all, Pernasis has really helped us learn in other ways that a traditional student environment hasn't done for us. And we'd just like to give a big thank you to Mrs. Circle for being so flexible and supporting us through our endeavors, and also Mrs. Tonsoni, our advisor, who's right there, for really helping us learn.
All right, any questions? How many is on your staff?
We have fourteen. We have two videographers and then twelve staff writers.
And nine of those, I think, or nine or ten of those are actually in the class, the other four are not from the class, such as Angel, but he still contributes to our organization.
Yeah, Angel's our social media correspondent, and we have a couple people just right on the side by himself, which is awesome.
How many other classmates?
Yeah. Well, well, no, underclassmen, only sophomores and freshmen, so there's about four.
Because freshmen aren't allowed to defend. So that's.
Do you have a feel on what medium is the most popular, is it the printed paper you hand out, is it online, is it?
Well, we get views on our website, so we don't really get that from the paper editions. So, I mean, we see people reading them, but we don't have an accurate amount. But of the things on our website, the Oracle overviews are our most popular.
Recently, though, his Alex article, that was really sentimental, really, you know, put to us ours. So we got a bunch of views on that. Paper edition, though, we distribute that throughout the cafeteria to all the major offices throughout the high school and Delphine School spots. So we, we have a lot of reach with that as well.
Mel?
Thank you guys for doing, I, I.
Thank you for your time.
If you guys want to see some, get down to the old list and put some on our table.
Where they're having class, steer away, because they'll grab you and they'll interview you. Everyone, and I appreciate that when you guys did that.
Oral side, we say it was shot.
They can buy too.
Wait tip oil, don't worry, you tip oil with the edge. I appreciate you guys.
All right, this guy's a.
Did you want to say anything with Tonsoni? No?
Thank you.
They curled up so much since they were like. Any questions for the high school?
Thank you.
Mr. Reddick.
All right, I want to first start off by saying, since we came back to school January sixth, at the middle school, we've had seventeen new students enroll, and we've only had five leave. Actually, probably tomorrow will be at eighteen new ones. So that's been really exciting, because we are finally starting to get some students to come in. It's also been challenging, too, because we've had several that have IEPs and trying to meet all their needs with the staff that we have, it's been quite a challenge. We've also, a little bit about leader in me, we had a coaching day last Monday for leader in me, and Courtney Wilduner, who's our coach, came in and met with all of our sixth-grade team, our seventh-grade team, and our eighth-grade team. And it was really exciting, because I feel like at the middle school, we have kind of been, since we are one of the first middle schools in the state to do the leader in me, we don't have really any examples to go off of. So we've kind of felt, I kind of felt like in talking with Angie Murray, who's our lighthouse coordinator, that, you know, like we were kind of feeling like we were a little bit of a standstill, and we really didn't know how much we were progressing. But after Courtney came, and I talked to Courtney at the end of the day, she actually said that we are miles ahead of even elementary schools in the second year of the program. What she was most impressed about is we came up with a school-wide goal, two school-wide goals, and then each of our students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, have come up with an academic and a personal goal. And Courtney said that all the other schools, the student goals were like basically the same ones for every kid in like the sixth-grade class, same for seventh, same for eighth. And she said it's so neat that our kids actually can take some ownership in it, because it's a personal goal of their own. If you go into the middle school in the cafeteria, you'll see a giant scoreboard that looks like a baseball scoreboard. That's our academic goal for the whole school. So what we're doing is each week of the nine weeks, so nine innings, we are tracking which class has the fewest percentage of students with an F. So each week, they would get, the winning class gets a point, whoever has the most, at the end of the nine weeks, we're gonna do a pizza party, and then at the end of the year, we're gonna do like a cookout field day for that class. So it's been really neat to see the kids at lunch, like kind of checking that out, to see what the score is. And we've actually seen an increase in fewer students with Fs. And then our school-wide goal, like personal goal, is an environmental goal. And basically, what we're doing is we have the sixth-grade hallway, the seventh-grade hallway, and the eighth-grade hallway. So our ninth custodians judge which hallway was the plainest at the end of the day. And we have a traveling banner that's going around, and we've printed off little Oracle like stickers, like they put, like Ohio State puts on their helmets. And each student that week, if they win that week, gets a sticker on their locker. So it's kind of an individual and a traveling banner. So the leader in me is going really well, we're in the second half of the winter sports season, so girls' basketball, swimming and wrestling, or I think, actually, swimming might just have their first meet coming up this week. But everything's underway, our eighth-grade girls' basketball team won the White County tournament Saturday, and our seventh-grade girls' basketball team came in second to a really good Tri-County team. So that's kind of where we are right now at the middle school, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, you. Mr. Shider. Oh, I don't know the protocol here. Thank you.
Sure.
My shoes untied. Well, first of all, I got an email a little while ago, a staff member said, let the board know, and this is a quote, how awesome the lights are around the parking lot. So I'm guessing one of our staff members just leaving, and it does make a huge difference, those LED lights and everything, it does illuminates it all. There's a couple of things on here, I asked Ms. Ross to kind of give us an idea. You know, for thirteen years now, the mobile data has been coming to the elementary school, and it's absolutely incredible. So many needs are being met in our community schools. So again, without reading all that, again, they were here recently, no, that's not a picture from our building, but they really do convert an empty classroom into, I think it had three or four chairs, and they have a team of three or four individuals that come and meet the needs of these kids, their dental needs. And you can see at the bottom, there was, this is the third year that they actually came back to fill cavities, and they even pulled two teeth last year. Imagine having that done in your elementary school. This year, they had thirty-six students, they saw in the two days, including cleaning x-rays and sealants on almost each one. Five students had a total of fifteen cavities as well. That was being done right down there at the local dentist in our elementary school. But it, again, it's one of those things, you know, Mrs. Ross and I were just talking, geez, I'll take money, it was probably Friday or, probably Friday. You know, she was, you know, she follows up on some of that dental health and oral health, and there was a kid last year who, two kids who really need to have some significant dental work done. You know, they know the limits of what they can do when they do it. And when they came in, they checked the kids out, and they saw it wasn't done, so Kay immediately called the mom, said, hey, just remind her. And the mother welcomed the feedback, and she did get the kids, or will have the kids into their more regular dentist. Our PTA Mom and Sundance, that was Friday night, about two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty, was a great event. Again, something that's a little nichey, if you will, there's a need, the mothers love it, the young men love it as well. My wife, you know, our son will be twenty-four, she, one of these years, she goes, I'm gonna take Branson. So I might have to sneak him in, but he's six-four, so I don't know how well I can sneak him anywhere. But there were about two-hundred-and-fifty in attendance there, with kids and their mothers and their aunts and their grandmothers. Huge shout-out to our PTA, our staff, many staff members were there, helping to hang up coats and stuff like that, and many members of our community helping to pull it off. There's a couple of images on the back, they don't do it justice, I don't have readily available access to color, so I apologize, but just imagine lots of cool colors there, but it was really, really neat. And it's really funny, because it's just two hours, as somebody who does DJ a little bit, it's funny, because they'll get there at, what did I say, six-thirty, one, six-thirty, eight-thirty. So the kids, they get there, and they're all excited at six-thirty, and I'm telling you what, some of those groups, they were leaving within fifteen minutes, because kids are tired already, because they come in and they just start running around. They're all drenched with sweat, and there's their gate standing there, but it's, it really is, if you get a chance next year, swing by at least for ten minutes to check it out. I talked to Mr. Rong off and on through email today, I, I, I wanted to, and he wanted me to bring this up to you guys, I don't know if this is the venue. I don't know how much you guys are aware that there were some efforts made to kind of remedy the intercom or the sound system in our gym. I think there were issues from the get-go, I, that's about all I know. Other than the fact that right before our Christmas program, which is attended by eight, nine hundred people down at the elementary school, the mixer board failed. So it's not under warranty, there is no service plan with this outfit of Indy, who we have been very unhappy with almost since the beginning. I know there were steps to remedy it, remedy it through the district, through this office, and so forth. But basically, just want to let you guys know, you know, we're kind of limping along, it's a system that's not working right now. System was, I think it was ten or eleven thousand dollars we paid out, should have lasted a lot longer, it did not. There's a component, the mixer, there's an outfit, Brand Electronics, they've got like an outfit called Pro Audio, they're at a loft yet. A guy actually came in like the day before our huge concert, our huge Christmas program, he was able to readily identify the issue with the mixer board, he brought in a replacement, we were able to play through it, sounded great. I guess I'm bringing this up to you, because Mr. Rong wants you to be aware of it. I probably, I would ask at some point, we're allowed to fix this, we're gonna get some quotes from the same outfit. I don't think everything needs to be fixed, I just think there's a key component that needs to be looked at and replaced. I would strongly suggest, if we do, we do talk to Brand Electronics, because truth be told, they came in, they didn't charge us anything, and he spent a couple hours there, gave us something to use for the time being, and then he came back, picked it up. And I've not been pressured by him at all. And then he came back, picked it up and I've not been pressured by him at all. Uh, with Scott and I, Scott and Gear and I talking today, just about that whole episode. I was reminded Friday night when the DJ said, hey, can I tap into your sound system? No, can't, I'm sorry. And I was reminded Friday, so that's kind of why I brought that up. So Mr. Rong wanted me just to bring it up that that's something, I, I think we really need to look into, um, anything else, we could talk forever, the leader in me, so many wonderful things going on, absolutely incredible.
Who has access to run that sound system? And are the people that are running it, were they properly trained?
Who has access to run? Well, Mrs. Bries has it, myself, Kathy Zink, Scott Gear. Uh, truth be told, if, I really don't want to get into this right now, but, uh, the, the buzz was that was some of the construction work that happened. Uh, perhaps that might have inhibited the ability for that mixer to cool like it needed to, maybe there could have been debris. I think that's what the guy from, uh, Brands suggested, when he did a quick little, uh, visual of that equipment piece. And truth be told, and again, we've got this with all vendors, every vendor's critical and another vendor's stuck. So, you know, of course we got the, from him, you know, they sold you junk, they sold you, I don't know, I'm a principal, I, I try to run the school. Um, were we trained as well as we probably could and should have been, probably not. But, um, like I said, talk to Scott Gear sometime, it wasn't the best, most successful transaction, uh, with, uh, and the outfit is listed there, uh, for kicks and giggles there.
I know it had problems from the start.
Yeah.
Oh, if it had problems from the start and if you had, if you bought something, and Nick, maybe you can kind of chime in on this one, going maybe if it's valid or not. But if we sit there and we bought a system and for this mount and there was problems from the get-go and it's not resolved and continue to be a problem, is there a recourse or not? I mean, even though found our warranty, it still should have been part of that warranty because they just never fixed it. Now, if you're sitting there saying, oh, it worked okay, there's no problem, and then we did the construction and then we had problems that way. That might fall into somebody else that did the construction. But you're, you're sitting here and I'm hearing, and even Steve said, you know, there, that, there must have been some problems with it at the start.
I don't, honestly, standing here, I don't think there was ever a time we were having, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how this vendor came to be, that was not, don't know if we were given bad advice, um.
Okay, but there was since start, I mean, again, it's like a lemon or something.
It's been.
Where's this equipment located?
Um, it's on the stage, it's in the tower, there on the stage.
So is your, is your planning it?
Well, I think what, I think what the guy from Brand Elect- Electronics did, I think as soon after he came in, I think he gave us a couple of different quotes. One that would remedy the immediate problem, which is that mixer board. I don't think there ever was a quote where we're going to, we're just going to undo, because I think there are some components that are fine. I just think, you know, if you talk to him, he's like, I can't believe he sold you A, B and C. D and E are pretty good, they got that stuff cheap from overseas and it's cheaply made and it was going, it was, it was, it's going to break. But.
My recollection was that the microphones were an issue kind of from the start.
Seems like a frequency thing because the FF whatever, they couldn't be at a certain level of frequency. And he sold it to us six months before. And again, this is, that's not the realm, that's not the world we live in and here we are. So I, I'd have to look at the contract, I don't know if I necessarily, I don't think I have it. Um, my suspicion is it seems like things got funky, it was that one year, something's going to happen. And again, part of the problem is, is we don't use that stuff enough. We did, you know, we really realize it at the Christmas program, because that's our, that's our big one. Um, and that's when the, the, the system's really taxed.
Well, I appreciate if you can find some out pretty quick, uh, some quotes because we've got, uh, other events coming up.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, we'd like, if it's in the, the works, that we could do that.
I think I can have the quotes, I think the quotes will be tomorrow and I, and I'm really optimistic, this is why I told Scott Gear. I, I think he had, we had a very reasonable quote to replace that, this, the key component. And I don't think it was this huge thing, I mean, it's still money, but I think when you look at the whole scheme of it all, hopefully it won't be so, so bad. And again, I like the fact they're more local, I'm not sure how this other thing happened. Bless you.
Any questions for Mr. Shider? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gill.
Okay, from the early childhood center, uh, the kindergartners and preschoolers are excited because, you know, since we are in Camden, they're able to walk over to the post office and visit the community areas and the businesses. So that's coming up, that's a big adventure for them. Also, they wanted to let you know, the teachers did, that they're having a dinosaur day that you're invited to come out to. Um, next week, the students will be divided up, going around different classroom stations. And they're going to be looking at the heights and lengths, they're going to bring the dinosaurs to life for the kids. So there'll be a lot of, a lot of excitement going on, we'll make sure you get pictures if you're not able to make it. Uh, the K-12 world, we've really come together a lot this year, um, especially with our intervention. I just met with Diane McKinley not too long ago this evening and we talked about how, um, Jake Reddick and the teachers interventionists there are working together to get some things going for our tier-two and tier-three students. Um, something a bug that we'd like to put into your ear is that, um, I think Mr. Reddick will agree, we would really love to have a math interventionist come on board to help out with some of those students that have those needs that go beyond the tier-one classroom. And also too, our, um, hopefully you got some great feedback about our Oracle Oscars. I know our teachers, um, overall have been very appreciative, they've been able to lead some of that professional development. So instead of going outside of our district, our teachers are stepping up and they're teaching and they're leading these sessions. Um, for example, Cassie Gasser is talking all about the smart board. You know, we put thousands of dollars into this technology and we're having a teacher lead it and, um, the teachers are grateful for that. Pair deck, I encourage you to find out about that, that allows for, um, teachers to get automatic feedback from students while they're presenting and talking to the students. Um, we're looking forward to our next one, which is April Fools. And I think they have an April Fools joke. Yeah.
Don't reveal too much.
Um, but the teachers are really interested in learning about trauma and how to handle those behaviors that students have right now. Uh, so we're totally getting, um, teacher feedback and buy-in with this. And so we thank you for your support that we can continue having that. And then lastly, Promise Grant Committee, I'm part of that. And what we're doing is the students who have a college direct account, if they can find five champions, maybe, um, five dollars a piece, twenty-five dollars. The grant committee is going to put an additional seventy-five dollars into their college account. So if you hear about that, it's true, it's happening, but it's only grades K through three, because it was in a previous enrollment from last year. So if they're able to raise that twenty-five dollars, deposit that in, they'll get an additional seventy-five, no strings attached.
So a question, actually, I was going to ask for yours, but sickness, uh, we talked a little bit, the, um, how, how sickness come along? I mean, there's been schools closed, right? We've had kind of an, you see it's leveling off right now, what's your take?
Elementary K-five, we've been at like seven percent, it's like we've had ninety-three percent attendance, so we're doing really well. Rocks on.
We haven't been too bad at the middle school with the students, but we've been about seventy-five percent of the staffs, you want to say? So.
Oh, and we'd also like to thank Kay Ross because she's making sure the mobile dentist is getting to, um, Camden to work with us.
What date, did you say, Diamond somewhere day with us?
Um, that's coming up this following week, I'll get the date for you right now.
Okay, thank you.
And we've kind of, ours keeps coming in like just groups. It's a different, so we've been kind of holding about the ten percent, fifteen, it just keeps kind of going. So, we're still getting it.
Are the dentists, uh, local dentists that are doing this?
It's a great question. I don't believe it's a local, local outfit, but I honestly am not sure where they come. My guess is it's an outfit that travels around to all the different schools. It's a school-based program and they probably go, they probably get signed up and they travel around the state and Midwest. That's a great question, I'm not sure exactly where it's based at. I'll text Kay and see if she knows, but actually I'll look.
I do want to say the custodians have been doing a great job of, sort of wiping down every single night, all the desks and things to kind of help keep the flu bug at bay.
And Renee Raines has been doing an excellent job of spraying it, Lysol, everything there.
You guys should walk through the building and just see how clean they are. They're always clean. They smell like disinfectant.
Yummy.
Kay, routine matters, is there any objection of the board to do these all in one motion?
Oh. Maybe just make motions. Just identify them individually, whether it's.
Okay, a motion in second on the floor to.
I would, I'd just identify the letters, by some letter, yeah.
Uh, on routine matters, we have consent items. Should I read all this amounts and so forth?
Yes.
Consent items, claims payroll amount of one million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. An approval of the monthly financial reports is submitted by the treasurer. Allowance of the year-end transfers twenty-nineteen. Number four is a payment to Weir's in February of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, resignations. Excuse me if I mispronounced anybody's name, Chute Hale Meyer, special ed aide at the elementary. Sherry Hicks, food service dish porter server at the middle school. Uh, Dawn Amato. Secretary at the elementary. C, employment of classified staff, Logan Lorman for sub-custodial, eight ninety-four an hour. Walker Hitch, sub-custodian, eight ninety-four an hour. Shannon Hartle, dish porter server at the middle school cafeteria for nine twenty-eight an hour, uh, five and three quarter hours per day. Krista Haas, cashier server at the high school, nine twenty-eight hourly, four hours a day. Carrie Parkhurst, elementary special education interventionist for the nineteen-twenty school year, ten sixty hourly, twenty-nine hours a week. Sandra Rowe, food service director, forty thousand annually, eight hours per day, two hundred and twenty days, retroactive back to January first, twenty twenty. And she had been our interim. Uh, Lindsay Miller, special education aide at the elementary, ten sixty an hour, twenty-nine hours a week. D, ECA's, Bryant Tonsoni, DCH bracketology, stipend of eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars. E is fundraiser facility usage, we have the Delphi Youth Baseball use of the elementary cafeteria on March second, twenty twenty, six-thirty to eight-thirty PM for fundraiser kickoff and coaches night. We have pennies for patients, awareness and support for lymphoma, and that is also at the elementary. And F, wrestling overnight trip for the semi-state. Those are the routine matters. Looking for a move. Any discussion relating to that? Uh, some of these, are these all, uh, new hires? Have they had background checks and all that are already approved or? I'm assuming they, uh, Sam, do you know?
Um, a couple of them, they might have been submitted, there's one waiting on remote back. But I know, like today, I believe about Lindsay Miller, is that correct? So, and she, we just got her on Friday, so.
We, we make, we, we check, I mean, that's, we won't let them start until.
Best of your knowledge, all of these people, they've submitted everything. Just, yeah.
Well, I think for clarification, uh, we definitely want to know when we're approving if those background checks are pending. So I think we want to make sure we note that.
Okay.
Uh, maybe we could catch up next month if it's, if there's nothing pending.
And, uh, Logan and Walker are students, they're not ECA, so.
Any other questions?
Sam, would you back up a second on what you just got to say? That there was two that's on here that I noticed.
Um, Logan and Walker for sub, sub-custodians there, I think they're seniors this year. It's, I've been, Walker's team today.
Yeah, they did summer help on the last year.
So there's those nighttime weekends.
This is when they need a sub, yeah, on the weekends or in the nighttime.
Because who, who does nighttime, did you just have surgery recently, is that what it was?
Yeah, we've had.
If they're eighteen, they still need a background check.
No, they're under eighteen, that's why we don't have background checks, we need to, at this time.
And I don't even know if they'll be used, but right now, we've kind of been in a crisis.
I understand, we want to make sure it's all clarified and again, to Kristen and, and Gill's point is that, you know, we want to make sure that they are checked, one, two, that we know that ahead and, and that every motion we make is basically passive, they have not yet. It's just because they, like, doesn't necessarily mean they will pass it, so. Yeah, that's more in your game, wheelhouse thing.
Right, right, yeah. It depends what kind of background check you're running, seven-year-old or whatever.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion in second on a floor to approve the routine matters as stated.